Welcome everyone to the West Milton Council Workshop for June twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. We'll start this by having roll call, please.
Jason.
Mr. Dorman. Mr. Horn.
Here.
Ms. Metz. Ms. Gregory.
Here.
Mr. Fogel.
Here.
Mayor Hurst.
Present. First on the agenda is the request for a four-way stop sign at the intersection of North Main and High Street.
We invited the residents, oh, good.
I'm here.
Great.
I don't think anybody else is here from a neighborhood, but where do you want me to stand?
Wherever you want, we've got the intersection pulled up here.
Okay.
So they can all see it.
Okay.
And then Ben has also had a handout with some initial information, so should you have her speak at the microphone?
Yeah.
So that they can hear. If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind. So I'm Barbara Cecil. I live at the corner of North Main Street and High. I live at two nine five North Main Street, and I've lived there for fifty-two years. So we have a problem with cars. And I sent a letter, and I think that you all read the letter, so you know what I'm gonna talk about. They start at five seventy-one. Right now, the road is blocked because of the construction that's going on. But they start at five seventy-one, and they head north. And by the time they get to the intersection of North Main Street and High, they are usually going about forty miles an hour. In a twenty-five mile an hour zone. So it's been a problem for quite some time. I wrote a couple of years ago about the same matter. And they sent a couple of policemen, and they sat there for a short period of time. They didn't, they didn't stop anybody as far as we know. And then they did the mile, the speed screen, where they could tell how fast everybody was going. Most of the time, they stopped, they would go a little bit slower past the sign, and then they would continue to go on their way. I, I don't know how fast they're going by the time they get up to McKinley Street and some of those streets. So I, I just think that for safety reasons, and that's the biggest concern that we have, is safety, that it would be good to have a four-way stop sign. Then they would be forced to stop, and, and they would have to stop as they're coming up High Street. They would also then have to stop at the corner of North Main Street. So.
So I have a question.
Question away.
Just so I know exactly where you're talking. So when you're coming from five seventy-one, and you're going up Main Street, High Street, if you take a right there, that takes you right into the funeral home, correct?
Right.
Okay. So there's a stop sign on each side of High Street.
On High Street, but not on North Main.
Not on North Main.
But when you go south, and you, you're heading, and you go past five seventy-one, there's a stop, there's a stop, four-way stop sign at Market Street. Then right here, there's a four-way stop, right out here.
And there's one in Hamilton.
And there's one, yes, yes. But there's none on North Main Street.
There's no four-way stops at all on North Main Street?
No. Not past five seventy-one. Okay?
Okay.
What other questions do you have?
I know Ben gave us a handout here about uses of stop signs and everything that happens. Ben, Mr. Manager, do you guys, is there any kind of standard or minimum distance in residential areas that are twenty-five miles an hour for there to be between stop signs?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised, but I'm not aware.
You just wouldn't qualify as that distance?
Right.
I mean, there could be a stop sign there, it wouldn't qualify as, that'd only, that'd be the only one, so that, that would be void. There's no other streets close enough.
Right.
To be a problem, yeah.
Well, I was just curious if there's a minimum, or.
Distance?
Right, you know, or maximum, whatever, however you want to say it, to where you don't want the distance between them to be too long, so speed can't increase. And the reason to ask that question is, I'm sure there are other residents that may have similar concerns. And so you may be asking for a stop sign on multiple corners. And so I was wondering if there's a guideline to go by that would be able to be applied to say, yes, this distance is further than what ODOT recommends, or, you know, whatever it may be. Just to use that as a guide, doesn't have to be the final rule necessarily, but I was just curious, anybody have any idea?
And so, I mean, one, one bit of addition to that, so, Barb, thanks for coming tonight.
Sure.
I don't get to see as often as I like to. But, you know, so.
You're not your neighborhood anymore.
I know.
I know.
I can't go by there. Anyway, that's a whole other story. So I look at speed, and then I look at the intersection. So like, stop signs and speed don't really go hand in hand, so.
What is it?
Stop signs and speed don't really go hand in hand.
Okay.
So like, you're not supposed to control speed with a stop sign. So what I look at is, I look at the intersection itself.
Okay.
So like, in forty-plus years, I don't ever remember having an accident there. So like, the intersection is flowing, obviously, as it should. And the second thing I look at is approaches, like, as you're approaching the intersection. So I know coming off five seventy-one, it's a clear shot. I mean, you could see that stop sign from five seventy-one. If you're coming southbound, and you're coming over this crest, which you know, you've lived there for long enough.
Right.
You, at this point, you couldn't even see if there was a stop sign there. So my fear is, by trying to control the speed and putting a stop sign in, you're gonna put, you're gonna make an intersection dangerous that wasn't before because of time to identify the stop sign prior to when you crest this hill. So basically, when they, if you're not from town, and you don't know it's there, which, when you're designing traffic, you're designing it that it's the first time anyone's ever seen it, it's a, you know, it's a new thing. I think it'd make it dangerous to come over that hill and then have a stop sign at the bottom of a hill in an intersection that doesn't have a stop sign, and we haven't had problems with. With that said, aside from the stop sign, I think there's other things we can definitely look at as far as like advanced warning of the intersection. You know, enforcement is a big, I mean, it's not what everybody wants to hear, but really, speed enforcement is different than intersection design, if that makes sense. So I mean, what I, I just kind of took everything I knew, and I put it on the piece of paper, because I was hoping to see you before that. But it just basically tells you that the two, speed and stops are not, they don't really go hand in hand. And that, you know, adding a traffic control device to an intersection that's currently accident-free is not the best idea. But with that said, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I can just say what I, you know, what I research and what I know.
I just see kids out there.
Yeah.
Riding bicycles.
Right.
Not stopping a lot, a lot of times, and I just don't want anybody to get hurt.
Sure.
So that's the primary reason for what we proposed.
And it opens up a discussion of what else we can do there, too, to make it safer. I mean, there's, there's definitely other options that we can do. And I mean, it's not, you know, this isn't a new request. I mean.
Right.
We probably get a stop sign request maybe four or five a year. And as far as Main Street South goes, I don't, those stop signs were up when I started. So I don't know the reasoning. A couple of them, like Main and Dewar, you know, I, I consider, just a good example, I consider like Main and Phillip the same as Main and Dewar, you know what I mean? Because now, with the building back there, Main and Lowry, I'll use Main and Lowry, it's probably better, with all the houses that are up there now, it's about as busy as Dewar and Main. It's got a cross-traffic-doesn't-stop sign up there that we put up when I was fairly new, I remember, because we had people trying to just come on through. So I, I don't know the reasoning as to why some of them are and aren't. I'm not gonna say I agree with all of them, but they're there, and I mean, that's for another day. But I just don't want you to think that, I mean, I know council understands, and I, I'm kind of the one that wrote the memo. I don't want you to think that I don't understand. I live down there, you know, I know, coming down this hill, you know, I know they speed up at five seventy-one. They don't want it, they don't want to hit the lights.
Right.
So they're going around the light. So that makes them go fast that way. And a natural incline, if your foot doesn't have to be on the gas coming southbound, you're just picking up speed because you're going down an incline that whole way.
Right.
So I definitely, I mean, my personal opinion is, is that we sit down and brainstorm what, to meet the objective that you're looking for, we come up with good ways to do it without making an intersection not as safe as it has been, so. Thank you.
Because I'm, I'm looking at, you know, my map on my phone, and other streets that don't have a four-way is North Street, which is the street that Sour Mug is at the end of. And Front Street.
Right.
And the other one is Lowry, right there by the Bulldog Diner, that's not a four-way. And then the big one, which I've always wondered why it wasn't a four-way, is at Emmerich. Because people pick up speed there.
Right.
I was sixteen, I got pulled over there because you're going out of town. And my parents live just right up the road, J Road back in Hope Flat. So I know that's a speedy, a speedy area through there as well, and that's never had a four-way. Has that, anything ever been brought up as a four-way stop there?
That one hasn't, believe it or not. I mean, I don't, I was never in on discussions on that, having a four-way stop, mainly because Emmerich is, is traffic signaled. So I assume that the traffic on Emmerich was always greater, maybe in the past than it was on Main for some reason, I don't know, but that one's never come up, but.
I just was curious.
And I feel bad for the police department, because they're gonna get a bad rap, because people drive faster today anyway.
Right.
And so, you know, there could be five of them on, and on five different streets, and the other two hundred, they're all, you know what I mean? I feel bad for them, but I know that there's a solution for this that would, that would help everybody, you know, without creating any additional problems. I just think it's up to us, and me and the manager work with council to find that.
Okay. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of stop signs, Market and Jay, right?
We got that one. Where's your son at?
There you are, I could see you, Jason, some more.
We've talked about that.
Can you give us some options, though? Like, I don't know if like, like even just putting up signs that say "Slow Children to Play" is an option? Because like, I live on Main, and there's always kids on that road, whether, I mean, they're there.
Right.
You know, like, it's just what it is. And so if we could have, like, even if that, I don't know if that's an option to do that, like.
Yeah, so the, the children's signs, there were probably about fifty of them up in the eighties. And since, since they all kind of got rusted and whatever, we've taken them out of service, only because they're not recognized anymore. Because they were white noise, because every street had, during that time, every street had kids, and nobody, you see it, you know, ten times after that, you don't see it anymore. However, there's more catchy signs of the warning variety that can, you know, basically show intersection ahead. There's always an option of some solar, some solar speed limit signs. There's lots of options to attack, not, not as much the intersection, but try to attack, or make people slow down. Bigger cities call it traffic calming. They don't really do speed bumps anymore because of all the accidents, and I'm sure you've heard about some of those horror stories. They do do some swales, like the city of Columbus and such, but it's not really a good idea, because if somebody is going too fast, they're probably gonna lose control. You know what I mean? So, yeah, they're gonna damage their car, and we're gonna say, well, that's what you get, but in that case, if there's kids out there. So maybe not necessarily children playing, but there's a large variety of signage now that I think you can make it, you know, more flashy, I guess is the best word for it, more eye-catching than like a children-to-play sign. And I, I would be happy to come up with some options for you guys within, you know, definitely before the next workshop, if not by the Friday memo.
I would suggest two of the most effective options are going to be placing the speed camera there more frequently, and asking our officers to more, more frequently stop by and, and run speed. Give some warning tickets. Those are, in my experience, the most effective at changing habits. You have to do it consistently. So it should be there, you know, like the camera can be there once every three or four weeks, or every five or six weeks, but on a frequent basis. Have an officer stop by once a week, or two, two nights a week, not always the same time, of course. But those are probably the most effective long-term solutions on dealing with speed.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. All right. Next is the proposed new fire truck.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if Chief Jay was gonna be here this evening. What I would suggest is, if the council has any additional information they want from the department before you choose to make a decision on their request, if you could convey that either directly to Chief Jay or to me, so we make sure you have all the information you wish before making a final decision.
I do have a question with that. I know they talked about, they have two trucks that are older, that they're looking to replace, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That was my understanding.
Yes.
But sequentially, not all at the same time.
Right. They talked about before, the fire company, which is through the township, that that truck was refurbished, and I think, I believe, the village might have went in on part of that with the refurbishment of that, that truck. If I'm not mistaken, I thought he said that because of the age of those trucks, there's no way to do the refurbishment at this time with those two trucks, because it would be too costly. Is that what I remember hearing, is that correct? Could we, can we maybe confirm or get some more information from them? What our options are on the table? That's what I remember he said, was that it was cost prohibitive this time around.
Typically, once a truck gets to a certain age, it won't be the current standards.
That's what I thought I heard, but I just was. That's what I remember, anyway, but. Okay. So I really, our only option on the table is to buy something that's used, that's sufficient, or buy something new? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I can ask the chief to be at the next regular session. I don't know that he wants to wait till the next workshop. If I can get confirmation on that question, I'll get it back to you, but I wasn't sure how quickly you intended to make a decision on that matter.
If, yeah, I, I would really like that, because I'd like to see what all the options are with the new, used, what, what's really all out there on the table.
For the regular session in July.
Okay.
There we go.
Howdy, y'all. For all, uh, for y'all who don't know me, I'm Dr. Nurse, some relation.
Jonathan, if you don't mind going to the microphone so they can hear you.
Absolutely. Like many municipalities, our size in the United States, our second most prevalent mode of transportation are those nifty little fellas that drag us through most buildings. They may not be as comfortable as the luxury that is found in a two thousand and three Pontiac Rand Dam, but they cause a significant amount less upkeep. Don't check me on that with your podiatrist, and certainly don't correct me if you have a podiatrist. All right, that's not that bad. The sidewalks, that would make cars better. I'm not sulky, right? Every stretch of sidewalk in our village has tripping hazards somewhere along the way. Many residents of our neighborhood have done their part in creating continuous routes from a dead end to downtown. Over the past month, I have catalogued many of the sidewalks in various states disrepaired, measured against the Pacer Sidewalk Program. Now, the Pacer Sidewalk Program, just on the next slide, thank you. Our street departments utilize the Pacer system for analyzing streets, giving them a one to ten rating, ten being the best. That evaluates many factors of a section of road, including wear, tear, and share of traffic. Purdue Old School modified this system to be used with sidewalks. And in the next several slides, I will have some examples of what each of the numbers look like around town. So at number ten, we have a new surface. A surface with a rating of ten is either fresh, or has avoided any damage through weathering or underlying conditions. The sidewalk here was poured sometime last year, maybe in the last couple of years. And a surface with a rating of nine, which is shown on the next one, is, might have some minor defects, such as a slightly offset panel, or surface scratch, or a crash, or really won't require too much attention as it stands, but may become worse over time. This panel here has a surface level transverse crack. Over time, it will develop into a gap worth caulking, but it will not affect accessibility for many years to come. Rating of eight means the surface is holding up very well, and may not require attention, but defects are beginning to build, or a single defect needs a minor repair to bring it back into compliance. For this sidewalk, the panel has been raised just over a quarter of an inch. To prevent it from becoming a tripper, tripping hazard, the joint may be ground down to a smooth transition once again. On seven, we have a sidewalk, the rating is seven, we, it will be more visible in its effects, and that might require attention, but they do not create a serious accessibility issue. In this picture, we see some transverse cracking that affects many panels. This indicates that the structure is either permeable to the point of allowing freezing and falling damage, or the underlying foundation is loose enough to cause the sidewalk to sink. A rating of six indicates that the sidewalk is accessible, but is damaged to the point of needing some type of repair. In this case, the vegetation is creating a hazard, and the spalling and cracks underneath should be caulked through to ensure that the sidewalk gains a few more light years' life. Now, a rating of five, the, there will be visible distress to the sidewalk, as you can see, many of the panels are weathered. The cracks are deep enough that new life is forming from the vegetation, and some repairs and patches are needed, and replacements are severely weathered panels, as suggested. Sidewalk, the rating of four, is going to be hard to pass through on a bicycle, and the effect of panels need replaced, but someone could still at least walk on it. Now, for the last three, sidewalk, the rating of three, has panels that are in dire need of replacement, but does not have the problems across the entirety of the sidewalk, and could be crossed by someone that was at least paying attention. Sidewalk, the rating of two, will likely be avoided on walks, spalling is turned to an exposed undersurface, and it covers most of the path. And of course, the sidewalk, the rating of one, has failed. It cannot be accessed by someone on a bike or in a wheelchair, and someone walking below a bicycle trip. Seriously hazardous conditions. And this is where they fall. So many sidewalks in our town, the minor repairs were less. And they're not dangerous to pedestrians in our village, but on top of the repairs that need to be made to encourage safe walking for people, we need to start thinking about the ways sidewalks will look in five, ten, twenty years. A small surface level crack today is a broken ankle tomorrow. I've included a proposed ordinance that will update the sidewalk guidelines to fall under ADA compliance standards, and places guidelines for enforcement that make easy, make life easier on the person having to repair their sidewalks, by providing specific notes on repair methods, and what parts of the sidewalk are out of compliance. And for the people on our side, that would inspect the sidewalk by providing a specific set of guidelines for things that constitute compliance. And now for moving forward, is funding. For the implementation of new sidewalks, it is important to identify the areas where need can be grouped. For example, the downtown area probably needs the most out of the fund for maintenance and upkeep, but due to, that's due to extensive walking and usage, obviously. And the sidewalk infrastructure, sorry, and due to the sidewalk, extensive sidewalk infrastructure, it is maybe focused on as early as sidewalk is being added for the first time to close those gaps in the city that are shown in blue on that picture, which I know is a little zoomed out, so hard to see for the entirety of the town. Rotating zones allows you to make a priority list of your fixes years in advance. Many repairs don't require total panel replacement, but they can be much more temporary. If you're, you are rotating zones, you can bring a panel up to compliance for less than fifty to a hundred dollars today, and allow it to last a few more years before the zone comes up, and you can buy the replacement panels for both purchases, that would happen with the rest of the sidewalk, because you're implementing it. And then before I ask the next question, which is, those are gonna be questions, what question? So, any questions? From anyone? All right, well, if you're interested at all, I have lots of pictures and other things on my iPad, and I can sit down and talk to you about sidewalks for four or five hours if you want.
If we could get a copy of this presentation.
Absolutely.
That would be great. I might have some additional questions after taking a look at that, that'd be great.
In your packet is the proposed ordinance that was drafted and has been reviewed by Mr. Heron. It has not been reviewed by our law director, but should the council be interested in updating the ordinance, I would suggest that would be the next step, to have them take a look at it. I've also included in your packet a brief description of sidewalk programs that I've utilized in the past. They're very simple. Typically, a small amount, twenty-five to fifty thousand is set aside. On an annual basis, you can do the program every year if you're, if you're ready to support improving the sidewalks. And you can accept applications, and the village would reimburse up to fifty percent of the cost of installing new sidewalks in an area that doesn't have any, or replacing sidewalks that are of a certain level of disrepair. So for example, I've suggested that it has to score a five or worse to receive funding. So, for example, I've suggested that it has to score a five or worse to receive funding. You can also make a priority by geography, a certain area of the town you want to focus on, and so you don't accept applications in that area. Reimbursement is contingent upon the finished sidewalk meeting, the inspection by the village staff. I've also seen programs where we get a contractor to give us a price on so many feet of sidewalk, so because they're doing a larger amount, they'll give us a better price, and then the homeowner has the right to contract with that gentleman to do the sidewalks and get a better deal, but not required to. They certainly can have their own contractor do the work. That's just some of the highlights of the program. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. I know it was not put in the budget for this year. That doesn't mean we couldn't go ahead and do it, but typically you would do applications in the spring for work during the summer. So, any questions? Yes?
With the studies that Mr. Hurst has done within the village, have you looked at the whole, whole village as far as, like, the, the level of the ratings from one to ten? Have you, have you done that much work?
I haven't finished the entire village yet, but I've done, well, quite a bit so far.
High percentage, he's not done a high percentage.
If you see him walk the streets, I'll do this.
Okay, so, I was just trying to look and see how many were in that five or, or worse area with what you've looked at. So, in looking what, what you show here, you have one, two, two, five and five, from five on down to one, so I'm just trying to understand what all that, what all that means.
So, if it's scoring five or worse, that usually means it's less ADA compliant and more inaccessible, so it's not typical for a lot of the sidewalks around town to be so bad that they're scoring less than a five on the thing. It's a lot of ones that just have, like, a little bit of a slight offset raise or something here or there, but it's the ones that are like, you know, you, you'll see them when you're walking around town, the ones where you trip over it, because you didn't see them when you were walking through, or, I'm sure everyone like me is, probably not asked them, but somewhere around the area. Hurt a little bit of your ankle here or there.
Okay. And my other question, the, the last bullet that you have on here, applications will only be accepted in the area in question has no sidewalks, or the section of the sidewalk proposed is rated five or worse, according to the village sidewalk rating system, so...
Those are options that you can, you can open up to everybody.
Do, do we know, places like Troy, Tiff, Pickwa, Covington, do they have similar type of programs like this? Is that what they?
I do not know the...
I'm just looking at the benchmark.
I've done these programs in, in, in other states. I've not, I'm not as familiar with how it's done here in Southwest Ohio.
The closest programs that I've seen that are similar are Brook Park and Hilliard for Ohio. It's not common to our, air, to Miami County at least, but I guess that's also the, uh, called the Troy theory, right? So, you know, they can choose to have the amenities here, but it's part of the living in the west of Oklahoma, you know?
Okay. I was just curious, I didn't know if, Lainey, if you knew if Troy has anything like this in place?
I don't believe Troy has anything like this in place. I'm not positive, but I've never heard of it, so...
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think this is a great idea to be budgeted for next year.
Okay.
And the program fleshed out to be what we want it to be, to accept applications and hit the construction season for spring, as you were talking about.
We can do that, and between now and the end of the year, we can fine tune the revised ordinance to the council's liking.
Right, any amount, all that.
Any amount.
I appreciate all the work you've done, Jonathan, for this, because this was a lot.
Thank you.
You did a really good job, and I really appreciate that. And I, I also think this is a great idea, like, I feel like walkability is something that is important in our village, like, I see people, I mean, I live on Main Street, I see people walking all day, all the time, and this is, I mean, for me, this is a big issue. And it's important, it's a safety issue. And I also know that the cost of concrete is not cheap, and I think being able to help would be super, it, it would just, it would be really good for our community, I think.
Mr. Craft?
Hi. Mike Craft. I think it's great looking at all the sidewalks. Were you contracted by the, the village to, to do this work, or are you just doing this on your own?
Just working as an intern this summer.
Oh, yeah, I'm just curious, yeah.
I have other things to do.
I understand, don't we all? Yeah, so I was just curious about your credentials and everything, not that this requires any, any credentials, I was just curious.
I'm studying a degree in public administration, but outside of that, I don't really have any personal, it's just from, uh, you look at enough things and can finally place them based on all the other things I've learned beforehand, based on Pacer and concrete sidewalk commodification system like Purdue, and also looking into the Department of Transportation's travel guidelines, just anything you can really sit down, learn over time, but obviously my credentials are just as a layman, it'll be the final part of the service structure and treatment that they go through with the good people.
Great.
He's finishing up his master's degree and part of, you know...
I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I think it's, it's good to take a look at it. Be great if we could do that for the streets as well. Thank you.
Yep. All right, yeah, to connect some of these islands that, of sidewalks that we have, where, you know, it's just out there, I think that it's gonna really help things going forward.
Between now and the end of the year, council can arrive at your priorities for the program, and then we can structure how we offer it based on those priorities.
Sounds great. Uh, next is the vacant building registration ordinance.
Yeah, uh, this has been on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you come up to the mic for us?
My name's Jay Blaney, I have one question. I've been noticed around town where you're doing that handicap at the corners and everything. Now, when you're putting this program in, is the homeowner responsible for doing that procedure work, too?
I'll move that question over to Ben. I think it's normally just like, what, when you're doing curbs?
Yeah, so, um, we need, so, mostly ADA rounds met the criteria from ten years ago or, but they've come out with new, basically new ADA rules, so if we work on a street, the streets we're putting them in right now, we're getting ready to pave, so we're putting them in ahead of the paving, so that they drain properly and they meet the new criteria, so if you see us working, chances are it's probably that we're getting ready to resurface the street or make improvements to the street.
Okay, so if the new homeowner puts in the, the new sidewalk, and there's a corner there, does he have to come to for the senior order?
It doesn't, the, the way the rules read as far as ADA go, it goes more, it goes on the right-of-way side as far as the street or right-of-way side of it, not the back end or the homeowner's side.
Okay.
Yes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest the homeowner, if they have any question, contact staff, and we can look specifically at that situation and give you a more definitive answer.
And I, me being the, I'm a homeowner, getting ready to fill the house here, and I'm just trying to find out all the restrictions and everything you have to go through to put a new sidewalk. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your question.
Thank you.
All right, vacant building registration ordinance.
Right, uh, as you may recall, at the last regular meeting where the council was considering this, there was a, a question about some of the fees that would be charged at under ninety-eight point two-four. Uh, I've suggested that the residential building annual fee would be five hundred dollars, and the vacant commercial building would be a thousand, but those numbers can be whatever council wishes them to be. The point being that you want it to start out as a nominal fee, but as the longer the building remains unoccupied, the fee doubles. And so at some point, it becomes enough of a carrot, hopefully, to encourage the building to be reoccupied or sold.
I actually had a couple of questions, which you answered prior to the meeting starting, and then, but I would still like to get back with you on some of the other...
Please.
...that I feel that maybe could be maybe more clear, or...
Absolutely.
All right.
I want to run the subject on this. I've been back and forth on it, I think I said this a month ago, but just to kind of restate, I think the ordinance is too complex for a registration. We've been saying that we need a way to count and register vacant buildings, which is a good thing, in my opinion, to know, and that this gives the village inspection abilities, it also gives the village the ability to find or whatever those that aren't using their properties in accordance with what it's zoned for. Those things, to me, are not, anyway, I don't like that part. I'm not against a vacant, trying to, to do something with the vacant building, starting with figuring out who they are and that kind of thing, even carrot and stick approach, but I think there's too much teeth in the language. And we might say, well, we don't intend to use it that way, but the teeth are still there, and so for that reason, if it's in this form, I will be supportive.
Would you be willing to mark out the sections that you'd like to see revised and written?
I certainly can, yeah.
I think that would be a good start.
Yeah, me too.
I, I would, a comment I made to the mayor earlier, I would suggest that if any version of this is passed by the council, that it would be modified after it's been in use for two or three years, because there'll be changes that you'll want to make, either making it stronger or not.
Sure.
Uh, but that it's not intended to, to be enforced in this, in this form forever.
Right.
Uh, it's, it would be a work in progress.
Right.
So, uh, whatever version, if any, the, the council is willing to adopt, the staff will implement. If the council doesn't wish it implemented, we won't.
Right, yeah. And Mayor Hurst, if you could, I'd like to know what your questions were that you asked the city manager as well, if, if you can send a separate email or what have you.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, what other questions are out there? And, and my only other thing is, is we've been talking about this for several different meetings. Have you had any, you know, vacant building owners in town that have contacted you, asking any questions about any specifics of what we've discussed? You haven't heard anything from anyone?
I don't believe I have, no.
Okay, okay.
All right, yeah, I, I gave my copy of the stuff the manager shared, and so I'll, I'll send it to you.
That'd be great, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
All right, any other questions on that?
Ben?
Mr. Tenerman? Oh, no, come on up.
Good evening, Jason Tenerman. I do have questions about this ordinance, and really what the purpose of it is, so I've just started learning about it. I read it for the first time here while I'm sitting here tonight. I guess I'll ask the first question. I kind of follow up to yours, Scott, if anyone with a vacant building has contacted the manager, do they even know that this is going on? So, to not have contacted you, they would have to know that this ordinance is being looked at, and if they don't, then of course they won't have contacted anyone. For the people that I've talked to, not many people know that you're looking at this. So, basically, to get to my basic questions, while I agree that having some control over the aesthetics of buildings within town is a good thing for the community and for the neighborhoods, it seems as though there are ordinances on the books already for dealing with unsightly buildings. I kind of have an issue with just because a vacant, or a building is vacant, that you have any need to step in. And I'll just give an example, if I want to buy a house and leave it set empty, I'll just bluntly ask, what business is that of this council or of this town? If I maintain my property in a well-respected way, if I want to let it sit empty, it's kind of my business, not yours. That's, that's my gut reaction to this, whether it be residential, commercial, anything. I think it's a slippery slope when we start telling people how to use the things that they own, if it's a problem, if it's a nuisance, if it's a danger, and I think there's other ways to go about taking care of those things and not fining somebody because they're not using a property in the way that you see fit. Now, if it's outside of zoning regulations, they're using it the wrong way, they're in a residential area, and they're running a business out of it, and not like a guy doing home construction, but someone doing a retail business where they're having additional traffic coming through, and they shouldn't be. Again, there's zoning reasons to deal with that. As far as like an empty commercial building, while I understand, because when I was on council, there are some commercial buildings here in town that aren't being utilized. We used to want to encourage businesses to come into town. I just still don't think that it's the public's right to tell someone what they get to do with that building, if it's in compliance with the purpose of that building and what that zoning is. I, I guess, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions of council, but if, I will pose that question if you choose to answer. What does give us the right to tell someone what to do with their property, as long as it's being maintained in a healthy way?
Well, um, so, let's go back to your example of the house.
Okay.
For whatever reason, let's say lightning strikes it, catches on fire.
Sure.
And, you know, so if the fire department gets there, do they have to rush in to try to make sure that there's no one inside? But if we knew it was vacant, then, not necessarily that they would take their time, you know, going through it, but they would know that there was no one in there, and they could go through, you know, a little slower. Or, from the other side, let's say that they start seeing lights, the, the police are driving by, they see lights inside this house that they know is on the vacant, so...
Sure.
Now, you get a phone call, says, hey, are you in there? Do you have someone in there? Because there appears to be someone in the house, or...
Yeah.
And not saying that they would do that, but...
Right.
You see where, like, potentially there would be safety, where safety concerns or safety benefits, I guess, maybe is a better word.
Okay. That'd be a great example, and I would appreciate a phone call if I had a vacant place, or even if I was just going on vacation for a month and...
Yeah.
Someone contacts me. I guess I would follow that, though, with then what's the purpose of a thousand dollar fine, a two thousand dollar fine? We're getting up to sixty-four thousand dollar fine by year seven. I mean, is, that doesn't, that doesn't follow suit with protecting the good of the community and the property owner.
So, if, if we have vacant buildings, and a building, a commercial property is vacant for seven years...
Sure.
That building that could house a business...
Mm-hmm.
Is not bringing any money into our economy, into our local economy, right?
Sure.
And I know that the people that are supporting the sports teams, and that are supporting our events, and that are supporting our community, are, a lot of them are our local business owners, so now, you know, you're cutting out potential growth in the community, and like, I can go into a war and can do more research, but if you're holding on to a building for seven years and you're choosing not to do with anything with it, knowing this exists, I mean, that's, I guess at some point, it just becomes a choice, you know, like, it's also a safety issue. I mean, there's vacant buildings that are not safe, you have an issue with people breaking in, like Mayor Hurst said, and it's not, it's a safety issue, you know? Do you want to take on a liability? If you've got a vacant, if you own a house, and it's vacant, and you're kind of maintaining it, do you want to own that house, somebody breaks into it, they get hurt, they sue you? You know, I mean, we, like, having a, you're allowed to do what you want with your property, but there's, there's rules that will be put in place that... Should be, I mean, for a commercial building to sit vacant, a lot of them that aren't being taken care of, and that's where the issue comes in, it's not the people that are taking care of their things and following the rules, it's when people don't take care of their things that it, things become, this kind of stuff has to be discussed.
And I follow that, and I agree with a building that's not being taken care of, but we have ordinances to enforce if someone's not taking care of their building. I guess I'll give another example. I guess I'll give another example. And this might sound extreme, but to me, it's not really that far. Do we look at legislation for four and five-bedroom homes that are being occupied by two people? It's not their intent, it's not what that house was built for. They need to move on down and downsize so that some of these families that have large families and a lot of kids can afford to buy a house in this community. I realize that's a stretch. Okay? But it's also telling someone what they get to do with the property that they own and maintain. It's not that far of a stretch from telling someone that has a vacant building that they take care of, what they get to do with it. And just because the village wants to have more businesses come in, then do something with it. Offer to buy the building, put it in an industrial park. But finding someone who's taking care of their own things just doesn't sit well with me. Yep, thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the vacant building registration? All right, next is the Community Pride Award Program.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're going to try again to resurrect the Community Pride Awards Program. You have in your packet a description, I'll read it for the residents' benefit. It is based on, and will be awarded on the basis of the most improvements of a property in the last six months. Improvements can include the exterior, the structure, landscaping, lawn care, exterior improvements, and exterior decorations. Residential and commercial properties within the village, corporate boundaries, are eligible for the award. We're going to try to make awards two or three times a year. Winners will be selected by a committee of council, staff, and residents appointed by the council. Nominations may be submitted by residents and staff. No property may win more than once in a twenty-four-month period. We'll announce the winners at council meetings. I think I've gotten one or two nominations since I communicated with council that we're going to try to restart the program. Hopefully, we'd like to get several more. So, hopefully folks who are watching the council meeting or attending the meeting will get the word out. You see a property that you believe will beat those qualifications, it's very simple to get the nomination, address of the property, and why you think it should, is deserving of being nominated. And then the council will lead to form a committee to make the decisions on the winners.
I know in the, I know in the past, when we first established this and started this, we had this in the summer months, so I think it was June, July, August timeframe is when we, we had these, and then we also did one around the holiday season.
Two to three times a year.
Yep, yep. So, as far as establishing a committee, I know it's hard to get enough people to be involved in that, in committees like this. Is it not smarter just to do it, have the committee members be several members from council and several members from the village administration?
I think whatever the council decides, the committee should be, is going to be acceptable to staff.
Okay. So, I guess if we have some thoughts with that, we just need to communicate that to you.
Lot of snow.
Okay.
And then once the committee is formed, I'll submit the nominations we've already received, and hopefully we'll receive more nominations.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is reestablishment of the park board.
We've discussed that previously. I believe one of the key points is in this year's budget, putting funding moving forward. There's been no decision made on exactly whether that would take a fully constituted park board or serve as a committee of the council. I think those decisions are yet to be made, but I wanted to bring it back up and hopefully get the word out, and the council can come to a decision how you wish to proceed.
All right. Yeah, I'd like to, I wish there were a few more of us here so that we could kind of talk about it, but I like the, just the committee where we bring people in from the, you know, the public, and then meet with a couple of council members, and then there's a budget and stuff like that.
Certainly, you could start with a committee and move to a full-blown, a technical park board, statutory park board, I should say, at any time.
Hopefully get it off.
The law director can, yeah, the law director can advise you what steps that would require, but I do think the key is giving them some funding to work with.
I agree. Any other comments, questions?
I think we, just the main thing is, we need to figure out, you know, what we can budget and what we can have out there, what, I believe, when I was on this before, there's certain grants that are available through the state, through the parks and recreation and so forth, they're like, every two years that they come out, and I think they're in the May-June timeframe that you have to submit your applications for those grants. So, I think it, you know, when we have the finance committee meets in August, September, October, that we see what we can afford to put towards the park board and towards our park funding, and then look at what, establishing that group, and then what grants are out there that we need to really target, because that's how we got all of the equipment that's down there at the park now.
I would suggest focusing on projects more important than grants, and then once the projects are prioritized, we'll identify what grant dollars are in there.
Okay.
The other piece is, the comprehensive plan update chapter for parks and recreation is complete. That will go to the planning board, hopefully at their next meeting to begin their review. But whatever form your park committee takes, I would hope that would be their guide in moving forward.
Sounds good. Anything else?
That's all I have on that matter.
Excellent. Next is the trail lighting issue.
Yeah, this one is a little more challenging. We've been working for quite some time on the design of our first trail, which will run from downtown, the intersection of forty-eight and five-seventy-one East, to Rachel Ann Boulevard, approximately a mile trail on the south side of five-seventy-one. We got a million-dollar grant, federal money, to help build it, but one of the issues that the budget did not include was lighting. We've looked at a couple of different options. For example, I've learned that ODOT does not recognize solar lighting as being allowed on state highways, so until they change that, that's not an option. But, we could put solar on the bridge, which I don't quite understand, but that, they said might work. So, I've got three options. If we were to light the entire length of the trail with lighting that is acceptable to ODOT, it's expected to cost around four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars additional to the project. If we were only to light from forty-eight to the bridge about halfway, they expect twenty-two poles would cover the entire length or half, eleven, so two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars could do just a portion of it. But ODOT does not allow you to do it in phases, so that somewhat eliminates that one, as frustrating it is to me. The least expensive option is if we did three poles, three poles on the bridge at a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. It's not cheap, but when they don't allow us to phase it, for example, I wanted the design to include the conduit for lights, and I knew it wasn't in the budget to begin with, and we could do it later. ODOT won't allow that. You can't put in all the necessary conduit and wiring and then buy the lighting later. It's either all or nothing. And of course, it'd be really expensive, once the trail's built, to go back and dig it up and put in the wiring. So, I wanted to bring it to council's attention. I don't need a decision tonight, but sooner rather than later, if we have any intention of doing any version of lighting, we'll have to accept the cost and include that in the plans that are being designed currently. Does that make sense, I hope?
Yep.
So, we're talking about full streetlights, pretty much?
Yes. Typically, you don't like trails, in my experience, but I also don't build a lot of trails on a state highway.
Right.
That's the difference here.
Are there options acceptable to ODOT for not streetlights, but instead traillights, you know, like pedestal lights or...
I think it's possible that a portion, if we put it on land we own, for example, the park, we could light a portion of it that's not technically on the road, but they provide some lighting. But, once you got on the other side of the bridge, we have some right of way, but I'm not sure, ODOT won't tell me that yes, you can, even though that's considered, we own the property, but it's part of the highway right-of-way, if that makes sense.
So, anything that's in their right-of-way's got to be a streetlight or enough.
It's got to be their standard.
Right. Makes sense.
But isn't lighting kind of a safety issue? I mean, I feel like it might be a safety issue.
Well, it's definitely a safety issue.
To not, like, to not have lights at all, just...
I couldn't agree more.
You could start.
Which makes it frustrating that they're policing, but... Again, I don't need a decision tonight, but if we're going to do, those are the three options laid out, and really, there's only two. It's either four-fifty-five for all of it, or just the three poles on the bridge for one-twenty-five.
Is that sufficient lighting, though? I mean, with the three poles?
No. It would be on the bridge, but it wouldn't be for the rest of it.
So, we're going to have to figure out something else that we can, because that's, that's a bit worrisome.
I agree, which is why I'm bringing it back to you. My intent all along was to include it in the design, so that, and have them install the conduit, which was affordable while we were building the trail, but then do the lights at a later date. They won't allow that.
So, when do we have to make a decision on this? What's the timetable?
The design is on hold until we make a decision, so I would say the next thirty to sixty days, so I can move forward with the design.
What's our projected out-of-pocket cost already?
Oh...
I know we got the million-dollar grant, but...
I want to say our out-of-pocket's around six-hundred thousand, but I would want to check with Jill. I don't want to tell you wrong.
Right. So, we'd be looking at a million dollars ourselves if we went with the full lighting package?
Pretty close, yes, yes.
Maybe one-point-one.
Yeah.
And there's not other places we can get grants to supplement?
Not, not at this time, not that I'm aware of. Choice one is pretty good at it, and I've asked that multiple times.
I just feel like that's a huge safety issue. Like, it's, it gets dark over there.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, on part of the trail, the, you know, it's, there's a, there's a ledge, it's higher, and that's part of Stillwater Crossing South. We could put lighting along there that's going to shine down on the trail, that's between the road and that ledge, but somebody's got to pay for that. Whether or not there's enough lighting from the commercial that's along there, whether that was adequate, we won't know until the commercial's built and what lighting they have on the exterior of the buildings.
Right.
When does that grant expire?
Federal grant, it will, it'll take years. I mean, they won't cut us off. We're allocated through Miami Valley Regional Plan Commission. We can get extensions if we have to, but it's, it's expect, I mean, they, they say it would take five years to design and build it. Well, that's crazy for a one-mile trail. I've already gotten to cut a year off the timetable.
I guess my thought is, like, the south side of Stillwater Crossing, like you said about buildings and, like, commercial buildings, like, how much light is that going to put out? I just know, like, when I drive down that at night, like, it's just very dark and...
I agree. That's why I'm bringing the lighting to you.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we, we have to have some kind of light, like, it has to be there.
I've tried everything I could to convince ODOT to let us look at other options, or at least put in the conduit so we can come back later and do it.
Okay.
All right, is there any old business?
Yeah, I got one. Since we're talking about streetlights.
Yes, sir.
Streetlights for the south. They gave us a presentation about solar.
Yes.
So, to me, it means that it still hasn't been ordered to move forward, because they asked us a question, and we haven't given them an answer.
Well, we asked them, for example, if we could see some, and we're waiting on finding a place we can go look at. That's where it stands, as far as I recall.
This, I have an update for that. I had communicated with Jason while Mr. Sheridan was on vacation, and he had sent me a message back and said that they were still looking for a community that's relatively close to us to where we can go look at those solar lights, because we wanted to look at them to see how they illuminated and how they looked and so forth. So, he has not got back to us with a place that we can go view yet, so I know that he was working on that, so...
Okay.
Because I think that's paramount with these lights, to see how they are set up in a community, what they look like, how they're illuminated, other specifics, so forth, so...
Ben, do you have any thoughts about solar streetlights?
I'm not anti-solar, because I think there's a lot of good uses for it. I'm a little concerned about making that our primary lighting for Stillwater Crossing.
Okay. So, I guess what question I would pose to everybody is, does it matter how they look? If we're concerned about how they're going to work.
Like aesthetically?
No. I'm saying that you can go look at one on, that's fine. I don't have any concerns that it'll probably look just fine. But how they're going to function is kind of what I'm talking, you know, asking Ben about, is what he thinks is going to be maintenance upkeep and, you know, usability-wise as far as headaches and that kind of thing, so...
Because it's on us, because we have to change out the batteries when it comes time. They said the life of the batteries were three years, I believe, three to five years, something like that, so...
And really, the way solar advances, like, next year, there'll be a new type of solar, the batteries, there's no guarantee, the batteries will be readily available in three years, because we're looking for some batteries now that we can't find on things kind of like that, so...
Now, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, that was the quicker, easier way to get things situated. If they go the route of through AEP, there's new lines that have to be ran or something like that, so that's going to be time-consuming and I'm sure a little bit more costly.
Yeah, all-new conduit and digging up yards and driveways and road, because it wasn't installed with the intent of having streetlights to begin with.
Right. It just seemed to me, when they came back this last time, they hadn't talked about solar at all, and we were talking placements and everything, and then all of a sudden, they came with a solar option, which I don't not appreciate, but at the same time, if we had moved ahead when we approved the lighting plan, we'd already be on the waiting list for Miami Valley lighting, we'd already be in the process. But instead, because they brought it back to us, now we're waiting to go see something with the questions, and to me, even Ben having reservations, I think we just need to go standard and get them ordered and get it working, because if we wait another, how many weeks to go look at something, and another month after that, another month after that, we're going to be just as long down the road.
I, I agree with you.
I mean, that's just where, I, I mean, I was intrigued when he talked about it, but the more I reflected on it, I just didn't, I don't know that that's viable for all of them.
What do we need to do to move forward in that direction? Do we...
If that's an official decision, like, we communicate that to the developer.
Is that something we have to vote on?
Can't do that now.
Right, we can't do that now, so it'd be next...
Well, we can, we can go under regular session and then, see if we really wanted to, but...
Yes.
It's true.
Anyway... I, I mean, I, I agree, I don't, I mean, we've been waiting for over a month to, to see something that we could look at, and we, there's nothing evidently out there at this point. The more we spin our wheels here, we're not getting anywhere to help those folks out there with the safety issues at hand and so forth, so... Because it's been way too long to not have some type of lighting out there.
Right, so I agree. So, can we loop in Casey and Don, and then... So can we loop in Casey and Don and then get word to the developer that that's what we're thinking? And then pass a resolution if we need to in July?
I think that's, I think that's great.
I think that's good. I, I feel like it's important to get this handled.
Is there a schematic, a plan, a drawing of where the trail is going? And is that online?
It's from Rachel Anne to the intersection of 571 and 48 on the south side.
What's that mean? Because there's like a, a rock wall on the south side. I'm not sure what that means.
There's more than enough room to put an 11-foot path between the edge of the highway and the locked wall to.
So there'll be drainage pipe underneath the trail or something?
It'll be properly drained, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I was just kind of curious, because I couldn't picture how you were doing this with that rock wall in the road, like 20 feet off of that. Maybe not even that, 10 feet seems like it some places. I was just curious. Is there a drawing? A plan drawing?
It's in design phase right now.
There's a preliminary design, I mean.
Preliminary?
One of the issues is the, the bridge will lose one of the lanes. So it's not the rock wall that would move it, but.
The bridge will lose one of the lanes?
Correct.
Yeah.
A portion of one of the lanes, it'll, it'll be redesigned.
Yeah, so there's a preliminary drawing somewhere.
I'm sure there is, I don't have it with me.
Hey, we saw something at the outset.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a straight line, it's pretty simple, it goes between the road.
I know, it's a straight line from there to here, but how do you get there with a rock wall there and the road here? I was just curious how that was going to work. And in my mind, you know, there's a culvert and the drain and, you know, it's all rock. Ben knows that, most of this town is all rock underneath.
That's a good base for a trail.
Yeah, as we say, it'd be a good place for it.
Yeah, but there's also water runoff and coming down there, that's a pretty steep hill for wash, wash, you know, water wash.
Maybe a suggestion?
You make a solid surface.
If we have the plan for that, to show, maybe we can show it at the next.
Want to have one, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to visualize it on paper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any new business?
I just have one thing. I know that things went out with, I believe it's 98.08, the maintenance of exterior or premises with the businesses downtown. Yes. So I, I was looking at one portion of this, and it says that paragraph four at, at the bottom says, "The exterior of every structure or accessory structure, including surfaces thereon, shall be kept painted where necessary for purposes of preservation and appearance, or surface coated with a protective coating or treated to prevent rot and decay. The same shall be maintained free of broken windows, crumbling stone, rock, brick, peeling paint, or other conditions reflective of deterioration and inadequate maintenance to the end of the property itself may be preserved." So I'm concerned because the area behind Fox's Pizza, The Eye Doctor, a couple of those other businesses there that also backs up to the, the post office, that parking lot is just in terrible shape. So is, is, can, with this 98.08, has there been any discussion with the businesses back there of getting that up to current standards? I know Wurst's Variety, Wurst's Hardware, behind Pearson House, the chiropractic office, they resurfaced that, that whole entire parking lot back there, because it was in rough shape as well, and it, it's really nice. It's great back there. But the one that's, you know, behind the other businesses on the opposite side of the street is.
We actually had a meeting a while back with a lot of property owners, and they've made some improvements. I don't know if that language applies to the asphalt.
That was before you were, it was like before you were.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
They came and we talked parking, we talked, you know, everything.
Is, is there any thought process in?
We suggested to them that they spearhead a group to get together, you know, because they've got to drive that as far as on their end, to get together to participate in, you know, going all in and.
My impression is one of the challenges was there the larger number of building owners on that side than there were on the project you described.
Right.
And getting them all to agree was a challenge.
And they weren't all engaged in the meeting either, but.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, all right, okay. I was just, just curious.
Good question.
Any other new business?
Fourth of July, it's next week. July 2nd and 3rd, the Lions Club is having bingo. There's a carnival in the park, there are RVs for $25, tickets are $1.25 each, or 20 for $25. And that's July 2nd, 3rd, and the 4th. On the 4th, we have the parade at 11:00 AM. The Lions Club BBQ is going to be selling their food at Hoffman at 11, right? It's at 11. The carnival in the park is 11 to 11, fireworks, taco trucks, all kinds of fun stuff. There's a pedal tractor pool for the little kids. It's going to be so much fun, and I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. All right, any more new business? All right, next would be the, I'll open the floor for a motion to go into a regular session.
I motion we go into a regular session.
A second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorman, Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Gregory?
Here.
Or Miss Gregory. I'm trying to do this all at once, I'm sorry. Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move the councilors into a brief executive session pursuant to section 412 B5A to consider the appointment, dismissal, disapproval for motion to motion of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Vogel?
Yes.
Mayor Hearst?
Yes. All right, so we are going to go into executive session. There'll be, go for their business tonight. But if anyone is inclined to stick around, they're more than welcome to. There's a water fountain out front and bathrooms are across the hall. Thanks a lot.